All right, it's seven o'clock, so I'll start reading. Good evening, this is the Tuesday, December 8th, 2020 meeting of the Board of Selectmen. As a preliminary matter, this is Beth Cassavant, Chair. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. John LeBeau.
Aye, present.
John Samia.
Present.
Morris DiPaolo.
Present.
James Kane is unable to attend this evening due to a work commitment. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kevin Mizikar.
Present.
Valerie Clemmie.
Present.
Anticipated speakers on the agenda, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Peter Plutakis.
Ah, present.
Thank you. This open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. The order which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public participation. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by Google Meet as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, the Chair, will introduce each board member or staff member who has the lead role for the particular item or guest speaker associated with this item on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members first and then to staff members, inviting each to provide comments or questions. I will then call upon the members to offer a motion and then for a second. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute and unmute your phone by pressing star six, or mute your computer when you are not speaking, as not to trigger your camera feed with background noise. Finally, each vote will be taken in this meeting by a roll call vote. That brings us to the first item on the agenda, which is to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Item number two is to approve the minutes of November 24th, 2020.
Move approval.
Second.
No further discussion. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Okay, and number three is announcements and reports. We have a few announcements this evening. One is that the Police Patrolmen's Union will be holding their annual toy drive this Saturday from nine to noon at the Town Hall. This is going to be a drive-through event. It is an annual event, but it will look and feel a little bit different this year due to the restrictions from the coronavirus, but it will be a drive-through event, and they're partnering with SYFS to deliver these toys to that agency, and they will then get them distributed to families in the community in need. They're also partnering with St. Anne's this year and are looking for donations of laundry, laundry soap, personal care items, paper goods, things that you would use, like household items, things of that nature as well. So if you're able to take a run downtown hall this weekend on Saturday from nine to twelve and donate to the cause, I know that many in the community will benefit. We thank the Patrolman Union for doing this every year. The Shrewsbury Scholarship application is available at high school guidance offices, both at Shrewsbury High School and its surrounding high schools, or the Board of Selectmen's office, or it can be downloaded from the town of Shrewsbury website. The deadline for submission of the application is 4:00 PM on March 11th, 2021. And then finally, we don't want to start rushing the removal of Christmas decorations, but you might want to mark your calendars that if you do have a real tree and you plan to dispose of it using our Waste Management Service, Christmas Tree Pickup will be the first two weeks in January. So we'll do another reminder the next meeting that we have, but at least this way people have it on their radar that that's when it is. Does anyone else have any announcements for this evening? All right, that brings us to item number four, which is the Town Manager's Board.
Good evening, Board members. I have a couple items update you on this evening. I wanted to let you know that the, I guess, the noticeable aspects to the public of the historic property inventory will be starting in the next few days, so individuals may see people out and about within the neighborhood photographing historic structures within the community. If you are concerned, you can always call the Police Department on emergency line. They have the information on the individuals that will be out in the community conducting that survey. We're happy to see that the project is moving forward. Just want to alert the public that folks will be out and about taking photos of historic properties.
Mr. Mizikar, a quick question on that. If you are a homeowner living in one of the properties that's going to be photographed, were you notified so they're aware?
Um, no, we have not provided that type of notice to individuals. We, there's over 200 that are on the list, so we didn't, you know,
Yeah, that's a lot.
easy way to do that, so.
Got it. Thank you.
It won't be invasive. No one will be on private property, but if anyone is concerned, the Shrewsbury Police Department can assist.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. DiPaolo.
Just one question. Mr. Mizikar, are they going to have any kind of identification like we require the people who canvas door to door? So if somebody asks them who they are, they can show them some kind of ID?
Yep, and yeah, the primary person, yes, they will. Person in the field will be Mary Bolso, and she will have identification on her and other information related to her relationship with the town.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. I just wanted to thank the DPW, hopefully the only time we have to do that this year for their winter storm response over the weekend. It was unpredictable and I think they did a good job. We do have to apologize that the temperatures last night, even though they were as cold as they were, there seemed to be some precipitation or dew in the air which caused some icing early into the morning hours that did catch us off guard. It wasn't forecast. We had crews respond as soon as possible, but I know there were some ice spots in the community this morning, and we responded as soon as we could. Wanted to let the Board know that we will have bond rating call with Standard and Poor's on Monday, December 14th, this coming Monday. We will be asking them to affirm our monthly bond rating. We received questions from them late this or early this evening that we will prepare for and put a packet together for them, and we'll keep you eyes on their response, which will occur probably within 10 days of our call with them. And then finally, earlier today, the Shrewsbury Police Department launched their Facebook page. So if individuals are interested in staying up to speed with the activities of the department, both, you know, in times of response that impacts the community and for more proactive community engagement, you can like their page, which can be found at facebook.com/shrewsburypolice. So we're happy to have a greater social media presence and thank Chief Anderson and his staff for pulling that together, and also thank you to Valerie Clemmie, who provided a lot of support and guidance to the PD as they get their page up. That's the end of my report.
Great, thank you. That brings us to item number five, which is still you, Mr. Mizikar, with your coronavirus COVID-19 report.
I'm going to share my screen. Okay, so for this evening's report, continued challenges for the community with regards to the coronavirus. We've now risen to 950 positive cases, which is 236 additional cases from the last Selectmen's meeting on November 24th. As of the most recent reporting period from the state level, we remain in the yellow status, which is the second highest category of risk. We are at 26.9 daily incidents per 100,000. That number is sufficient for us to be read. The only reason that we're still yellow is because our positivity rate is 4.05%. And in order to be designated as the highest-risk community, positivity has to be greater than 5%. Positivity is the percentage of people testing positive compared to the total number tested. Just as a point of reference, at your last meeting, the daily incidence was 20.1 per 100,000, and the positivity rate was 2.93. So significant changes in both of those categories. We do continue to provide weekday reports on positive cases, and we'll continue to do that into the future. Unfortunately, since your last meeting, we've been made aware of four additional deaths that are indicated as with COVID-19 as the cause. Given all those challenges, the status of town buildings, we remain open by appointment only. We have solid guidance in place for employees through January 15th. However, we are contemplating changes to both allowing any members of the public in either by appointment only. We're currently researching data with level of activities with all departments on their appointments and what their experience has been over the past few weeks. And I will refer back to other employee changes as I walk through the next slide. Earlier today, Governor Baker announced that the entire state will be rolled back to Phase Three Step One. The entire state was at Phase Three Step Two. And some select changes related to this rollback reduces the number of individuals allowed at outdoor gatherings to no more than 50. And if there is an outdoor gathering that will exceed 25, advance notice must be sent to the local Board of Health. With regards to dining at restaurants, the number of individuals per table is being reduced from 10 to six. There'll be a 90-minute total time limit for dining per table. There'll be no types of live music or performances within dining venues, and masks are required unless you're actually eating or drinking. So as you're seated at a table, you'll be required to wear your mask, and as you finish things up and wait for your check, you would have to put your mask back on as well. With regards to offices and gyms, mandatory mask-wearing unless you're alone in office spaces. Clothes are limited use of break rooms. Within gyms and workout facilities, it's 100% mask mandate at all times. And the state is strongly encouraging telework again. This is probably a change that, you know, this is a change that we're considering. We were very successful, even with a significant number of teleworking staff. We probably will reduce the number of staff on-site at the Town Hall. We're roughly anywhere between 50 to 75% of staff on-site at any given day. We will probably go to a maximum of 50% of our total staff on-site in any given day, and encourage employees and departments that are effective with telework to do so. We'll continue to have our field staff, DPW, and our public safety staff operate through alternative means where there's no mustering at the beginning of shifts. Assignments are given to individuals, and employees report to their vehicles rather than a COVID meeting area inside a building. Diving a little bit deeper into the data, looking at a month-by-month analysis, November by far was our highest month with nearly 28% of our cases occurring within that 30-day period. And December, unfortunately, is looking much more challenging than November did. Based upon the first eight days of December, we'd be at nearly 700 cases within the month of December alone, if this trend would continue. We have 958 total cases, which I reported before. Earlier today, I just took a quick look at the data. It took us 215 days from March 19th to October 21st to reach 479 cases, which is exactly half of the total cases that were received or that we've been notified of, and it's taken the second 479 have all come within the last 48 days. So we are in an exponential climb up, moving in the wrong direction. Here's the 7, 14, 30, and 60-day snapshots. Again, the troubling sign here is that all lower increment is exceeding the next highest. So our seven-day trend is worse than our 14-day trend. And the same with our 14-day trend over the 30, et cetera. Here is the curve. We continue to climb today, excluding the anomaly that I've talked about in previous meetings with 37 catch-up reporting. In early April, today is our single highest day with 36 positive cases being indicated. And Board members, you'll note on our press release today that it says 35, and the reason there's a difference, we use net data as we clean data excluding erroneous addresses and errors in reporting. We got that out on our data reports, and we removed an address from an earlier day today. But the total new number of positive cases is actually 36, and that's nothing new. That's how we've reported since the beginning of March. A quick look at our age ranges. Less than 19 continues to be the highest-growing area with 475% increase since the beginning of September, 95 total cases. Somewhat of a favorable trend is that our oldest population continues to fear this surge better than the younger groups. Hopefully that trend continues, given the concerns with the virus of those older. And finally, what can we all do? As reported last time, just minimize our contact intensity, manage the number of contacts that you have, maximize mitigation policies like wearing a mask and proper hygiene. Quick, a few updates that I'm sure most are aware of. Tomorrow, the state, the governor, will be rolling out the Commonwealth's Plan for the Distribution of the Vaccine. We are awaiting what role, if any, we will have. And we've been in contact with individuals who were very effective for the town in rolling out the H1N1 vaccine several years ago. And we continue to make plans to be part of that response if needed. A lot of questions with regards to the temperature of storage and time to vaccination, things like that, with at least these preliminary vaccines that are coming onboard. Some of the other ones, like the AstraZeneca vaccine, may be a little bit easier to deal with from a temperature standpoint, so we'll be ready regardless to support the state in its efforts. That's the end of my report this evening, and I will stop sharing the screen.
Thank you for that very thorough report. Are there any questions for Mr. Mizikar?
I have a question. Mr. Mizikar, on the, the under-19 group, is there any, is that broken down any further? I mean, you know, it seemed to be kids under the care of their parents are a little bit different than kids either at driver's license age or slightly less than that, and I'm curious if there's any data about that.
I mean, it's something that I can ask for. It's not, this is the, as granular as we have it right now, but I can see if we can get some more raw data from the state health system to break that down any further.
Okay, I mean, it's, 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 to me, it would be an interesting fact to know what we would do with that. I don't know if we would do anything with that, so I don't want you to do any, you know, any extraordinary steps there. And not a question, but just a comment, Madam Chairman. Those are some very sobering statistics that I hope most people will agree is factual about the sharp uptick in cases, and I'm certainly not one to preach, but I think people should think about what, what those statistics are indicating to us and how personal behavior might affect that.
Madam Chair.
Mr. DiPaolo.
I'd like to echo Mr. LeBeau's comments, and it just, anecdotally, I think we in the community as individuals are seeing the effects of this more than, than we had in the past, perhaps maybe in the first month or so. It might have been more apparent, but I've talked to numerous people who now know people who, close, close to them, not like heard of somebody who has gotten ill, that many more people are starting to say that they know somebody who's, who's close or relatively close to them, a friend, family member, who's gotten sick. Not just tested positive and gotten sniffles, but really becoming ill, either be, being housebound for two weeks, being sick, or a short stint in the hospital. So this is, it is getting worse. The spread is a lot bigger, and, you know, hopefully we can all follow the rules about social distancing and wearing the mask, because they're simple things to do, and they seem to be very, very effective. And the only other thing that I'd just like to say, and Mr. Mizikar, I know that you're going to take this approach, but I would be inclined to err on the side of caution when we start to think about reducing the amount of people in Town Hall. The staff, you and the staff, everybody did a great job in the spring, working on a significantly reduced load. There were a couple of glitches, mostly in permitting, but I think if there's any sense that it needs to be done, we should do it sooner than later. There's no sense in putting people at risk when we know that they can do the work from home. So I know we have a service to offer, but as you say, if there's not a lot of in-person meetings that requires more staff in the building, and they can function from home, I would strongly encourage it. Hope a lot of businesses do that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item number six, which is a 7:05 PM meeting with Peter Plutakis, proposed manager for Andoli Austin's Two, doing business as Austin Liquors, 20 Boston Turnpike Road, for a change of manager to their alcohol package store license. And Mr. Plutakis, I know that you are with us. Thank you for waiting patiently for your meeting. It appears that this is a straightforward change of manager. Is there anything else that we should be aware of in your application?
Nope, Delilah, the previous manager, left in April, so I've been kind of doing that role from then on. So it's pretty straightforward.
The hours of operation appear also to remain unchanged.
Correct, yes, yep. We, yeah, I don't think there's been any change. If we close, we open eight o'clock, we close at eight o'clock at night, at night, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then we close at nine on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and then it's 10 to six on Sunday.
Does anyone else on the Board have a question for Mr. Plutakis? Okay, it seems we have no further questions for you, so. The motion.
All set.
Thank you. You're muted, Mr. LeBeau.
Move we close the hearing.
So it's just a meeting, so.
It's not, okay. This is what I talked about before. I can't see the agenda. I want to watch the show. I move we approve the license application as presented in the application.
Second.
Okay, motions have been made and seconded. If there's no further discussion, Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So you're all set. Best of luck in your continued role at managing Austin Liquors.
All set. I thank you very much.
Take care.
All right, thanks, bye.
All right, item number seven, under Financial Business, is to review and act on the FY22 financial objectives, which we asked for us a small revision to, so that it would incorporate and align with our goals. So if you were to look at the document in the drive now, you would see a new section on page six, Section D, the alignment of the budget and the goals. So it's almost like an umbrella statement that ties it all together, as was requested by Mr. Samia. So if there's any discussion or questions, or you just need to decide whether or not this meets our criteria now, and we're able to approve it. Not seeing anything, hearing anything. I know personally I'm comfortable with this. I see Mr. Samia nodding, and I know it was his suggestion to tie in the goals. So we will need to take a vote on this now. So I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. LeBeau?
I move the Board approve the FY22 financial objectives in the version dated December 8th, 1.0.
Second.
Great.
Madam Chair.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Before we vote, I was trying to get your attention, but I was muted. We did have another section of that. I think it's worth noting on how we're handling the pension, how we've changed that approach, and I was wondering if the manager could just quickly review that.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Thank you. As the Board has talked about on several occasions, the town has taken a very aggressive approach over the last 10 or more years in meeting its obligations to its retirees, both current retirees and those in the future, in funding its, what's known as its unfunded liability. So over the course of time, there wasn't enough money being put into the pension system by the town along with what the employees were putting in, in order to satisfy from an actuarial basis, the payouts in the future. So the aggressive approach meant that a significant amount of funds, for instance, in the fiscal year 21 budget, $4.9 million dedicated to that unfunded liability. We were on track through to be at full funding by fiscal year 22. Some recent changes in actuarial requirements, and then obviously the financial downturn. Put the Board in a position where it's considered the timeline that is needed for full funding, and we'll be reducing the total contribution in fiscal year 22 as set through this objective down from 4.9 million to 3.3. And as you'll see later in the financial forecast, that is a critical move to help preserve operations. It's always been this Board's ideal to fund its obligations to its, to the pension system, but not do so at a significant risk and harm to other services of the community, and that's exactly what this objective targets doing. Thank you.
So we had a motion made and seconded, so without any further discussion that I can see, we'll move on to a vote. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Myself, aye. So item number eight is a presentation on the FY22 financial forecasts. Mr. Mizikar?
Thank you. I am going to share my screen again and walk through a couple slides for the five. Thank you. I am going to share my screen again and walk through a couple of slides for the five-year financial forecast. First and foremost, board members, the five-year financial forecast is just part of our continued enhancement transparency with regards to financials and other aspects of the management and operation of the town. We're always trying to find ways to to share more information with the community and and alert them to trends within the operation of of town departments. The five-year financial forecast is just that. It lays out estimates for fiscal year 21 through 26. And we target providing timely insight into near and long-term financial impacts of financial decisions that we'll make in the upcoming budget cycle for fiscal year 22. We're doing the financial forecast upfront in this year's budget cycle, and I think it's a good home for it. But given the recent financial challenges, even more critical that we talk about this at this time, there's always been some type of look ahead in the budget document. Normally doesn't get published till fiscal projection two, or, you know, the second round of iteration in the budget. So it's a little earlier this year than we have in the past. And we will continue to update these figures as fiscal year 22 solidifies itself in the coming months when we release the various fiscal projections. One disclaimer that it's certainly a valuable tool, but it's only as good as the information that we have December 8th, 2020, which in this strange year, we don't even have an official state budget for fiscal year 21 yet. So it's interesting that we're looking far ahead because of our challenges coming, and we still have some uncertainty, even though we're into the sixth month of the fiscal year. So the assumptions, I'll walk through the financial forecast in a similar sequence that we manage the normal budget process. We'll talk about revenues first and then get into the expenditures and then put those two together to look at the financial projections. The revenue assumptions that we're using because of the challenges are a little more narrow, less historic, not a long look back. The challenges of last spring and this year really have shaken things up in the process, and I think it's more relevant to use the performance period of March 2020 through October 20, rather than the the three- or five-year trend, which would be a more common model to use for a financial forecast. We will dive deeper into these numbers in the revenue manual, which we're working on and hope to either preview or present present in full before the end of this month. And just one example that I can provide of that performance, local receipts for fiscal year 20 through the end of October 2019, we collected about 19.6% of our budgeted revenues, which is $2,422,000. We're at a very similar point, 19.8% through October 31st of 2020. But because of the budget challenges that we have, the revisions that we had to make for our projections for fiscal year 21, you know, that's nearly or nearly $400,000 less than in actual collections than the previous year. So three, those $351,000 is a decline in revenue of 14 and a half percent, and our total budget reduction for the year was 14% less than fiscal year 20. So there's somewhat a concern that that we're seeing a decline of 14 and a half percent through this period of the year. But everyone is very familiar that our biggest local receipt is motor vehicle excise tax, which does not get billed out until February. So that's what really makes or breaks the year, and it's challenging because we don't really have good insight into that until early April this season. So we're on budget really for this year, but significant decrease in revenue year over year from an actual dollar standpoint. So if we look at that five-year forecast moving forward, I've included fiscal year 20 and 21 as reference points, we're we're very modestly increasing revenues between fiscal year 21 and 22. We'll take advantage of the provisions of Proposition Two and a Half for taxation, state aid year over year. We're projecting a decrease at this point in time. Hopefully, there's more information known, and the governor releases his budget on time, and and that we have good wind at our back with a vaccine that's being implemented in the coming weeks, and there's continued positivity about resuming economic activities for fiscal year 22, obviously, which doesn't start until next July, which is quite some time away. And hopefully, we're in a much better state with the virus at that point. Utility revenue, we're using the rates and plans that we have in place right now, and they're really a wash as we balance those out. Free cash, do we anticipate using more free cash fiscal year 22? The biggest change related to that will be contributions to our stabilization fund if we're able to do so. And then very level funding and other available funds in revenue. So we have trended those figures out using conservative escalation over time, statutory escalation where possible through fiscal year 26. And over that time period, revenues will grow about $11 million. So a little bit of a deeper look into the fiscal year 22 revenue forecast, which is obviously the most important in the five-year trend, as that's what we're really planning for. Again, taxation increase based upon the provisions in the statutes, two and a half percent increase on the levy, a 10% year-over-year reduction in total new growth, so still additional growth within the community because of improvements, but just less. We're projecting about $800,000 versus $880,000 that we've seen in fiscal year, the current fiscal year. I am, again, a slight reduction in state aid. Hopefully, we're able to at least get that back to to level again. And then local receipts at modest growth of 2.53%. The biggest changes I've just noted, 6, 63% increase in in free cash. About $1 million of that is for contributions to the stabilization account, since we are unable to do that this year. Time will tell if we have sufficient funding to be able to operate and make such a contribution once we get free cash certified for this year, which we're a little behind in. And then other available revenue, seeing a slight decrease, but it's not a significant budget category. So total change in revenues about 3.28% year over year. If you take that free cash discretionary, one-time of funding of the stabilization count out of there, you're you're looking at even two and a half percent. The biggest challenge that we see with revenue forecast is that, you know, we're or at least I am cheering for a level state aid and you know, state aid is our second largest budget category. And when, you know, there's very few expense categories that year-over-year stay level. And when your revenue model is, you know, creeping along at the pace of inflation or even slightly below it, it's very difficult to maintain the level of services and just continue to carry them forward year over year. So it will be presenting some challenges on the bottom line position of the town as we move forward and look at the expenses. So what assumptions that I use in the expense categories based on budget budget projection is is again, estimating on the change between fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21, projection one. And that's a distinction because that's not the final budget fiscal year, projection one was actually higher than the budget we passed because it was the pre-COVID budget. I do believe that's more of an accurate representation of the true level service budget for fiscal year 21 than what we're actually operating with right now, which is a reduction in service levels. Just a reminder that in order to get to fiscal projection, projection one, we had to remove $650,000 from department head requests and $2.9 million in reduction on the school side of things, just to get fiscal projection one to balance. And then we cut further from there because of COVID. So I am using fiscal projection one and the difference between that and fiscal year 20 as as the key baseline assumption. Again, a very narrow window, not normally a good enough trend to look at, but I think it's more accurate than the increases that we've seen over the last three to five years. Where we have knowns like that service, we're using those numbers in the analysis, and if there's any anomalies year over year, like a department decreased from fiscal year 20 to 21 because of certain unique circumstances, we've we've trended that over a more historic pattern of two to 3% increases. And we've also reduced significant year-over-year increases because the financial climate just isn't going to allow for that. So this is a department level, not a line item level forecast, and it's department bottom lines. And I'm not using any estimates for COVID-19 within these figures. So we've been very fortunate to be able to manage the cost in our response to the pandemic through outside funding sources, mainly the CARES Act, $3.3 million that we received, along with additional aid of $1.4 million for school operations, and then FEMA emergency funding. Obviously, as it as we sit here, December 8th, most of those funds will terminate just 22 days from now. So we could very well have a challenge within the existing fiscal year into ensuing fiscal year, but just not knowing how to apply those expenses. We have good estimates, but it's just going to make the situation worse if we don't have any additional funding to apply to that. So they're just excluded at this time. So what's the expense forecast look like? I've provided the board with a range this evening of a low forecast and high forecast. It's really, in my opinion, rather modest growth. The cost drivers that exist, you know, the two primary areas, not the sole areas, not the sole difference, but the the primary differences between the low and the high forecast are, you know, sticking with the the former pension model, you know, earlier this evening, of course, in the previous article, the board set an objective to reduce that funding. So that's included in the lower side of the forecast. Obviously, the Beal Elementary School is projected to open for the upcoming school year within the next fiscal year, and that's a significant cost driver in hopes of maintaining service levels, enabling employees to get at least a cost of living increase to keep up with inflation, which we weren't able to do across the board and and for the vast majority of employees this year. You know, we're all within the mix of the difference between these two numbers and driving these costs. But the two largest that I can signal out is Beal and the pension. So we have a, you know, estimates across total expenditures between 151.7 and 155.5 million. They're broken out at the top side of there between municipal operations and and education expenditures. Again, utility expenses are going to be balanced, charges and offsets, capital improvement plan are all kind of self-sufficient, so changes there would equal would have changes in revenue, and they're not really going to drive these bottom line numbers. But unfortunately, you know, I see some big challenges ahead. With that revenue model that we used earlier, producing just less than $151 million based, you know, looking at these two ranges as I see them right now. Both scenarios unfortunately are a deficit. 807,000 to 4.5 million. I I think for, you know, the 4.5 million projection is is, you know, a very unlikely scenario, and I'm not trying to be an alarmist, but you know, given the fact that we had to roll so much out of the budget last year just to get a balanced budget, you know, you know, that's that's kind of a high end of expenditures. The closer we get to the 807,000 and refine the numbers and look at the revenues in more details and really start to get departments feedback on what they need to operate in fiscal year 22, hopefully, we can get below that and potentially to a level budget. It's not out of the question. But again, just applying some of these common rules through a financial forecast with the information that we have now. It looks a lot more challenging for fiscal year 22 than it has been in some in some recent fiscal years. So I just have one more slide. I'm going to look forward to any comments or discussion with the board. We have a long way to go in the budget process. Again, state budget for fiscal year 21 has even passed. As we sit in early December, the next step, as I noted earlier, would be the production of the revenue manual. And then a call out to departments by the end of the month for them to be providing figures for fiscal year 22. Obviously, departments, many of them are already thinking about that and have jumped out ahead of the game as far as our official call and are thinking both near and long term about their operations and what can be done for fiscal year 22. So that's the 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 kind of look ahead for the financial forecast. I look forward to, you know, any questions you may have and and working through the details in the budget process to do what we can with the funds that are available to us.
Thank you very much for that detailed look ahead. As difficult as it is, I think, to see numbers like that and the variability and the uncertainty of it. Board members, are there any comments or questions for Mr. Mizikar?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Samia.
Kevin, one quick question on the local receipts, just on how we receive them. We have 19.8% through 1031. It's obviously not level loaded in terms of when we get them. One of our biggest months of revenue for local receipts.
The the two largest single months are March and April.
Okay.
You know, somewhere between the the latter end of February to the to the early part of of April is when the motor vehicle excise commitment one is billed out to residents.
Okay.
It'll be very interesting to see what that number is on the billing side this year. Is everyone or most people in the Commonwealth know that your motor vehicle excise tax bill really declines over time, and our big numbers rely upon people having newer vehicles and buying, you know, brand-new vehicles. So it'll be interesting to see if if that type of economic activity happens to keep the commitment up and just meet the budget estimate for this fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. It'll be interesting to see as well from November over the next few months to, as the governor has pulled back, see what happens with restaurant receipts and the like as folks continue to stay in. We'll have to monitor that, which I know you'll do. Health insurance. Have we started to hear anything, given COVID, what the impact is of the overall insured group, any preliminary numbers or information on next year?
So we know that from last year, you know, last benefit year that that coincides with the fiscal year was a very good year for the Western Urban Health Group. The good news, bad news is because, you know, people weren't seeking a lot of care, not a lot of elective procedures, so the overall claims were down significantly, and the Western Urban Health Group, which is a consortium of 11 communities that buy health insurance together, you know, we're we're able to turn funds back into its stabilization account. You know, and get closer to the goal that it has there. So through the first couple of months, that trend continued. We got some COVID data, and that COVID data is very, it's as alarming as the COVID numbers that I shared with you. So a smaller group of people were impacted, but you know, you see individual hospitalizations for COVID-19 being $300,000 or $400,000 for an individual patient, depending, you know, you know, some of the sicker folks. So again, the good news is that the overall trending claims has been down, but a couple of them are really driving the cost. So we we don't renew rates until February timeframe, but kind of good news, bad news so far on that.
Thanks. And then just a general comment. As you said, this is a tool, but it's an important one. So really good work. So really good work on this, and thanks for the presentation. I think that we need to consistent constantly refine this forecast as more information becomes known to us. You know, it's important that we continue to review this throughout this calendar year as well into calendar year 21. There are some things as well, variables that aren't considered here, and you pointed out as well, the impact of COVID, we don't know if we'll get a federal stimulus on the revenue when that could help. It could mean status quo without. We schedule A receipts could be impacted, and state aid is a wild card that's right now, the assumption is a minimal decrease year over year, and given the state took a lot, was expected to take a lot of the rainy day fund, we'll have to see what 22 means, and that to me is a big wild card. So I think that it's important for us to continue to talk through at least once a month, if not every every meeting, and I look forward to continue presentations on this. So thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Mr. DePaulo.
If I could just ask Mr. Muzikar, excuse me, I think when when I had a discussion with you while flying about the projection, you didn't just take the municipal departments and into a flat, whatever, two, three, four percent across the board. As I recall, I mean, you tried to get it as as realistic, a budget number going out as you could based on what you could reasonably foresee, what the needs are going to be and what the cost drivers are going to be in those departments, correct?
Yeah, that's that's true. So we didn't we didn't apply the same percentage increase year over year for each department. So it's only a department level analysis, but within, you know, you know, that one hundred and twenty five million dollars that we spend on operations, you know, that occurs through, you know, up to thirty different departmental budgets. So it's it's refined in that sense, and it's not a three percent across the board or anything like that. It's much more granular.
If I may, I I appreciate you doing that because I think that as we go forward, looking in the, well, particularly the next two years, to have it as granular as possible, I think is going to help us through the process because we're not going to be reacting to unrealistic numbers by just doing an across the board increase. So I I commend you for that. I know it was a lot of work. I I think it's important, and I thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Muzikar, just a question about the capital budget and the plan for that. I know that we have a five year capital improvement plan. Is this capital budget reduced in any way? Are we putting off or deferring any capital expenditures based upon variability in the budget?
Well, the the short answer is yes. We every year, there's no single year that we're ever able to fund the year, the upcoming year's capital needs of every department. Over the past few years, we have been funding the capital improvement plan between one point eight and, you know, two to two point one million. And for fiscal year 22, I still only have that number at one point six. The the biggest challenge with one point six is that we only funded, you know, about a million in fiscal year 21, the current year. So fiscal year 22 is not even back to normal. Fiscal year 21 was about half of what it normally would been. And as you know, time hasn't stopped, and we haven't stopped using the equipment, and you know, the buildings are being used and things like that. So this kind of, you know, decrease in funding for the capital improvement plan is going to have a ripple effect into the future, and equipment and buildings are going to have to see some deferred investment unless, you know, some part of the model changes.
I guess I always think about how it's not just what you typically think of as municipal capital expenditures, you know, like trucks for the DPW or things of that nature, police, police cars, but it's also like the computers at the library, which I know are on a schedule to be replaced a third, a third, a third every three years, and that doesn't come out of the library's budget, that comes out of our capital improvement budget. And so I just think about things like that sort of throws off the whole cycle, and then you end up with a lot of pent up demand for things that need to be replaced all at once and just no way to really address it. So I appreciate your answer to that question. And then just you were mentioning in, you know, fiscal protection, protection one from FY21, that we had reduced the municipal budget by six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is any of are any of those services or things that were reduced or any of those built back into any of your budget projections?
Inherently, yes, and but it's an incremental step. It's we're not getting all those things back and then building from there, but that's why I wanted to use fiscal projection one as kind of the primary look because, you know, it was it was a bare bones level service budget during fiscal projection one, and to not recognize the fact that we made reductions beyond that, I think, is a little short sighted because if we're unable to at least, you know, build some year over year growth, we're coming up in in a second negative budgeted cycle, we will have to reduce services. There's there's no opportunity to, you know, it's a one year opportunity to kind of weather the storm, but you know, two fiscal cycles would be really difficult to maintain service levels as we have them right now.
I just think sometimes it's difficult in this environment to tease out the difference between what we're missing because we had to make a reduction in the budget and what we're missing because we're so restricted in what we can do because of coronavirus. So I think it's just important to note that there are things that are missing, that you may not notice them, but they are missing, and they may not come back because there just isn't the funding to do so. Thank you. All right, so if there are no more questions, that was just a presentation, so we can just move on to new business, which is item number nine, which is to review and act on the 2021 license renewals to include the following license types: alcohol, common victual, entertainment, Sunday and weekdays, bowling alleys, billiard tables, automatic amusements, auto dealers, livery, auction, auctioneers, Lord's Day, and my favorite, seasonal dancing. So we have all of those set up and listed for us. And Mr. Muzikar, did you have anything to add regarding this list?
Yes, one thing that I did want to note to to the board that this is a representation of all the applicants, applications that are ripe for renewal right now, meaning we have all the information and all departments, you know, have reviewed them and were able to go forward with them at this time. However, it's not an exhaustive list, so more than likely, your December twenty second meeting will be back with you with a couple additional license renewals. So this is not the full list for the year. And and I guess I should take the opportunity to note that there has been a notable reduction in the number of food licenses that were renewed year over year. I'm not, there's definitely some conventional frontline restaurants that are not renewing. The vast majority of those that aren't renewing is renewing is more ancillary to their business. So whether it's a nonprofit or organization that, you know, handles food and provides services to public in need of the license, a lot of those businesses have opted not to renew. Now, that doesn't mean they can't, you know, get the license at some point during fiscal year 20 or calendar year 21, but at least at this time, we have seen a reduction year over year in that type of licensing.
Mr. Muzikar, I wonder also, was there any, did you notice any difficulties that businesses had in paying the fees based upon their reduced ability to operate during the past nine months?
Very limited. I think we're fortunate in that front. It's it's something that, as you know, we've had the conversation about what the right approach was. The, you know, the overall response was was pretty similar to prior years. We didn't have a lot of individuals saying we're not renewing just because we can't afford it, you know, you know, just can't afford the license, therefore, we're not going to operate. Those businesses that weren't renewing, it seemed to be more systemic challenges to the overall operation of our business rather than just the cost of the license.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. LeBeau?
Mr. Muzikar, can you remind me, so called junk licenses, which is like antique jewelry, is that off schedule? Is that, are there some other licenses at different times of year?
Yeah, that's that's a spring renewal, I think, in April timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? And then we can just have one motion to approve all of these at once.
Madam Chair.
Mr. LeBeau?
I move the board approved the 2021 license renewals for alcohol, common victular, entertainment, Sunday and weekday, bowling alleys, billiard tables, automatic amusements, auto dealers, livery, auction, auctioneer, Lloyds Day, and seasonal dancing, as represented on the list we have for 2021 license renewals.
Second.
No further discussion. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DePaulo?
Aye.
And myself, I'd also just like to recognize Alexandria Martinez in the town manager's office for her efforts in getting all of this paperwork taken care of with the licensed renewal applicants. I know that that is no easy task, and she did it with ease, so I appreciate that work on her part. Item number 10 is to review and act on the Board of Selectmen's meeting schedule from January to July 2021. We have that schedule in the drive.
Move approval.
Second.
And the motions are made and seconded. It's the usual second and fourth Tuesday monthly. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DePaulo?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Item number 11 is to review and act on the matter of the one free bag pay it program from Saturday, December 26, 2020, to Thursday, December 31, 2020. You will recall that this is something that's done yearly. This year, Mr. Holland has sent us a memo regarding the one free bag program. I know that he was on the line on the meeting. I'm not sure if Mr. Holland, you had anything you wanted to add? You're still muted.
Rookie mistake, sorry. This is this is an annual thing that we do for one week, which is primarily the week we're immediately following Christmas Day. So it would be that Christmas on a Friday, so we went Saturday to Thursday.
Thank you. I know, I appreciate that bag. I really look forward to it. It's just such a great feeling to be able to put my trash in any color bag I want and put it out. So I don't know if there's any other residents that feel that way, but I think it's great. So thank you. We'll take a motion on that.
Madam Chair, I move the board approve the one bag, one free bag pay as you throw program from Saturday, December 26 to Thursday, December 31.
Second.
Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DePaulo?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thanks, Mr. Holland. Item number 12 is to review and act on the appointment of precinct officers to serve a one year term expiring August 31, 2021. And again, we have that list from town clerk Sandra Wright in our drive.
Madam Chair.
Mr. LeBeau?
Move approval of the list, appointment of the list of priest, of the appointment of precinct officers as recommended in the document provided to us by the town clerk for a one year term expiring August 31, 2021.
Second.
Motion's are made and seconded. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DePaulo?
Aye.
Myself, aye. I'd like to thank all the people that are volunteering to serve in this capacity. It's greatly needed, as we've seen in the 2020 election season, just how important it is to have people staffing our pools and taking on these roles. Item number 13 is to review and act on one associate member appointment to the zoning board of appeals, still a vacant term set to expire on March 21, 2021. We were very fortunate to have six qualified applicants, which I know it's always a difficult decision to choose just one, just to keep in mind that we do keep these resumes and letters of interest on file, and this is an example of a time when we did go back and ask for people who had applied previously to consider applying this time. So we really do go back through and make sure that qualified people were able to try to find a place for them on our town boards and committees.
Madam Chair.
Mr. LeBeau?
Madam Chair, as you appropriately mentioned, we did have an excellent applicant pool this time, and I think there are many candidates here who are worthy of appointment. We can only appoint one for this particular vacancy at this time. And I do want to mention that besides, I mean, there are many things that come, at least into my head, about how we appoint someone, and certainly we have to consider the, you know, qualities and attributes of the individual, but we also have to think about the body, the the board, the team, so to speak, and what would be most complimentary. So considering the current makeup of the ZBA and reviewing these resumes and letters of interest, I I personally would like to move that we appoint Kevin Nisbet of 11 Judic Street to a one year, excuse me, to fill the vacant term that's set to expire on March 21, 2021. As I just mentioned, I do think, considering the other members, full members and associate members of the board, that Mr. Nisbet would bring some new, some new eyes, a new lens to look through. So I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion from the board?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Samia.
So not sure how to proceed here. I appreciate Mr. LeBeau's comments. I echo what you said. I think that all of the candidates are qualified and bring unique skills. However, I I had did have an opportunity to speak with Mr. Nisbet. I think he's fantastic. I also had an opportunity to speak with Alyssa Bloom, and I think she's fantastic, and my preference would be to go with Ms. Bloom in this situation. I also think she brings good experience, good exposure, knowledge of zoning, as well as a unique perspective of living internationally in a couple of countries as well to provide a unique perspective. So I don't know if it's a motion at this point, or, but the next steps, I'd look for your guidance on.
Madam Chair.
Mr. LeBeau?
If you would allow me, I, I mean, we've approached this in different ways over the years. I'd like to withdraw my motion to appoint and replace that with a motion to nominate Kevin Nisbet for consideration and with the expectation that I think Selectmen Samia might make a similar nomination for another candidate. So with Mr. DePaulo's agreement about removing the second to my motion, I'd like to make my new motion.
I will second that motion.
Okay, so we have one motion on the floor. Mr. Samia, you have nominated a second candidate or applicant.
The next progress, that would be if I could get to take action or a motion, a motion on to nominate Alyssa Bloom.
Second.
Okay, so we have two motions. Both have been seconded. Mr. Muzikar, if I mess this up, let me know. I believe we will vote on the first motion, which was a nomination for Mr. Nisbet. And so, Mr. LeBeau?
Aye, I get, I get, excuse me. I I guess I would just ensure that there are no other nominations before you proceed.
Oh, that's probably a good idea.
Get more complicated.
There's just so few of us. I'm not going to nominate anyone else. Mr. DePaulo, do you have any other nominations?
No, I do not, thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, so then we'll go back and Mr. LeBeau, your, aye. Mr. Samia?
No.
Mr. DePaulo?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So now we will go back and vote on this. We do not need to vote on the second motion. I really, this is.
Yeah, I don't know if someone wants to correct me procedurally, but I don't think you have an opportunity at this point to appoint someone else, so.
Okay.
You might know what you do with that motion if anyone else has guidance on it.
Madam Chair.
Mr. DePaulo?
It it might be a good good idea for. It, it might be a good, good idea for, well, for Mr. Samia to consider, I won't tell him what to do, but. To withdraw the motion so that it's addressed in some form or another.
Just to clean it up in the minutes, it's a good idea.
Although I, motion, well, I withdraw my motion.
Withdraw the second.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. DiPaolo.
All right, always learning, always something to learn procedurally. All right, so we have appointed Mr. Nisbet of eleven Judic Street for those trying to follow along at home. All right, and that brings us to correspondence. But item number fourteen is a letter dated November twelfth, twenty twenty from Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito regarding the completion of best practices for a community compact. Item number fifteen is a letter dated November eighteenth, twenty twenty from Kevin Mizakar, Town Manager, regarding record, records access officers. Item number sixteen is a letter dated November twentieth, twenty twenty from Evan Macrin. Bullis Department of Veteran Services to North Borough Board of Selectmen regarding the approval of Central Mass Veterans District. Item number seventeen is an email dated November twenty second from State Representative Hannah Kane regarding two grants being awarded to the Shrewsbury Police Department by the Baker-Plato Administration. And I will just pause here to say that our police department received one grant in the amount of sixteen thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. For a subscription to the See It Send It app. And then the other was a grant for twenty four thousand, nine hundred and fifty seven dollars. Which is part of a federal grant funding from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. So I would just like to congratulate our police department on successfully applying for and receiving those two important grants. Item number eighteen is an email dated November twenty third from Andrew Truman, Town Engineer, regarding contractor street closing request number thirty six cross street update. And item number nineteen is an email dated December fourth, twenty twenty from Alexandria Martinez, Administrative Assistant to Town Manager and Board of Selectmen. Regarding non-renewed licenses for twenty twenty one, which just goes back to what Mr. Mizakar was sharing with us. Regarding some of the licenses when we were doing the approvals that are not being renewed for one reason or another. So that was just the list that was given to us, so that's it. That is the end of the agenda. If there's nothing else to come before the board an open session, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
And myself, aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.